Okay, good afternoon. It being 4:02, I will call this meeting of the City Council's Committee on City Services to order. And note that present are Consular Marian La Barge, Consular Ryan O'Donnell, and myself, Consular Maureen Kearney. And we're just waiting on Consular Dennis Bidwell there being a quorum. We'll go ahead and get started. And I'll ask if there is any public comment?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So first off, I'll ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes.
No, approved.
Okay. Any additions, corrections? Nice job, Consular O'Donnell.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Too much detail.
Very helpful. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. And I'll ask Consulars if we can maybe move up the building commissioners so we can act a way around while we... Plus, we know that Consular Bidwell may have the report on one of our appointees.
Please, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hasbrook.
So Louie Hasbrook, the building commissioner for the city. I brought a permit listing report, sort of the most basic kind of summary of permit activity over the past 12 months. It's a... We're busy. Permit activity's been going up pretty steadily for the last four years. And I... And as near as I can tell, it's going to continue to increase. We've started back to where there's a lot of new single-to-family housing starts, which is unusual. It's... We have to go back until, I think, 2004 before we can see the same number of new housing starts. And there's also multifamily housing between new buildings, 40, 50, 60-unit buildings, renovation of existing buildings. Significant... I'm... Significant number of new residential dwelling units. 155 Pleasant Street, 70 housing units should be finished by the springtime. We will issue the building permit for the Lumberyard Apartments and other 62 units sometime this week. The preliminary proposal for another 60 units on Village Hill, we'll probably see sometime in the spring. And in the background of all this, along with all the new housing, all the new single families at Village Hill, Emerson Way is another place where there's a lot of building activity. And then infill development, the changes in the city zoning to allow smaller lots and... And also more than one house on a lot is really giving a boost to the... To, you know, infill development, new houses. I think that... I think there's going to be, within a year, there'll be 12 new houses on Hinckley Street all by itself, four two-families and then another four single families.
How many houses? Eight?
Eight uni... No.
Eight houses, you said?
Eight houses.
Are those the condominiums?
The condominiums, and then also one at one end and two at the other end. And the proposal for another in the middle.
Really? At Pinkley Street?
Hinckley Street. It goes between Riverside Drive and Nantucket Street. But places where, you know, perhaps the zoning, like frontage went from 50 to 75 feet in the U R Urban Residential B District, and then the zoning changes brought it back to 50 feet of frontage, which is one of the... A lot, an awful lot of early '20s subdivisions were laid out with 50 feet of frontage.
Louie, the ones that are on Bridge Road next to the cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I mean, they're like squeezed.
The old...
Condominiums.
The...
There's what, 1, 2, 3?
Bridge Road, Bridge Road, Bridge Road, Bridge Road, next to the cemetery.
Same area as I heard.
That actually was a simple subdivision of land. That was a relatively large piece with frontage both on Bridge Road and Hatfield Street. And they, you know, two fa... Three... I think they ended up, all of them being duplexes.
Yeah, they're...
But each ended up on a separate lot.
Six of them.
Well, I don't think so.
Yeah, two on each unit.
Oh, right. Yeah, six dwelling units. Like, there might even be another one on the table, too. I think there were four buildings with some garages. But that's another example of the infill development. They moved the... It's a common driveway that comes off Hatfield Street a little ways down on the corner. Shaw's Motel, six apartments in the big yellow building, and then three other duplex houses. One facing Pomeroy, two facing Bridge Street. Like mushrooms on the lawn after a rain, in the summer after a rain. It feels like that. It's been an awful lot ago.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Which is, you know, and it's renovations don't necessarily increase the tax base, but construction certainly does.
What about Laurel Park? You lived there, right? You see constantly houses are up for sale, people buy them, and then houses are up for sale. Is there any renovations going on in there?
They're slowly, slowly, over time, the older houses are getting torn down and new houses are being built. And right now, Laurel Park is affordable housing. I mean, it's the most affordable, you know, single-family housing that you can find. Sometimes it's cheaper to buy a house in Laurel Park than it is to rent a place. But people, you know, they're there for a while, they get established, and then they move on. They don't stay for sale for very long. They're absolutely limited to the footprint, and so there's an awful lot of very small houses.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's not... At this point, it's not... It doesn't seem to make sense to do really small houses, like a 12-by-20 house, very small footprint. And a lot of the older ha... A lot of houses in Laurel Park are built on that original. It was actually a 10-platform footprint.
A long time ago, Louie, was that just used for summer, not all year round? Now they're all year round, right?
Yeah, most of them. 75, 80% of them are part of year-round. And they're get... The summer places are being converted. I think out of... There's 100 units in Laurel Park, 100 separate dwelling units, and I think 25 of them in the last 15 years have been torn down and rebuilt.
Wow.
And of course, when you tear down...
I think it looks pretty nice in there.
It's a very close-knit community.
Oh, yeah. Big time. I have friends that live there.
Smith College doesn't add to the tax base, but their renovation project at Nielsen Library is going forward, and they've started the demolition of the old building, partial demolition of the old building. That'll be probably a two-year project.
On the library?
On the library. That's going to be a struggle for the building department because it's going to end up over a course of two years. It's probably going to be close to the same amount of work as nearly one whole year. So half again more activity for us.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be down there several times a day doing inspections at the height of the construction. And these numbers aren't 100% accurate. There's about three weeks when not in this report because we used a new piece of software and it didn't work out very well. So then we went back to the old piece of software, but haven't figured out a way to incorporate it. Let's see, the...
Could I ask you a question, please? Can I talk to him for a minute about this?
Certainly.
You have on it building totals, the estimated cost, the number of permits, and fees paid, and you still have a balance of $39,000... No, 39... What is it? $39,600?
It's a mistake. It's a glitch.
That was a mistake. Something's not right here.
That's part of the reason we... No. We won't even enter a building permit until we have a check in hand.
That's what I thought.
And so that's part of why we wanted to... The soft... This software worked. It has glitches in it. That's one of the glitches. And because it's money, you can't just override it.
Yeah.
You know, it keeps very close track of it. But the new software was better in some ways, but it wasn't as good in other ways. And so it's gone back to the drawing board. We'll probably... We'll be trying it out again in January.
Yeah, because I didn't take that much for granted.
I hate to do... I hate to... I don't want to use spreadsheets because anybody can put anything on a spreadsheet. I would much rather print reports out of our permit software, but there are glitches in it.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
So my question is, if at any time, for example, you have 1,389 building permits out, those could extend and typically do... Well, the average would be less than a year, but some would go beyond a year.
Yeah, but figure the project the longer they go on.
Oh, yeah. Right, right. But typically, but it wouldn't be... So it would be about that many... You could estimate that many inspections, really, in a...
I think building permits...
Plus, you've got to go the numerous times, yeah.
A little less, a little less than three. Our... We estimate that you take the total number of building permits and that... There's about 2.75 or 2.8 inspections per building permit. There's about, almost... There's a little less than two for electrical permits, a little less than two for plumbing and gas permits combined.
But if you're even just looking at that, if you were to say, for example, just looking at the two number for the electrical permits, you get 1,027, so that'd be 2,054 inspections? One person has to kind of cover in a year? Well, he also has...
We have, I mean, there's electrical, plumbing, and gas, and there should be three building inspectors.
Yeah, okay.
And there's two now, and we're working on getting a third one. And... But it's over... It's way past 5,000 inspections a year. And this does... This whole sheet is only the actual permitting, which is... Doesn't count the periodic inspections, the liquor license inspections, all the zoning activity, the emergency, you know, the call-out fires, cars crashing into building type inspections.
Right. When do you think you'll have your other position filled?
I don't know. I... We haven't had... We haven't found anybody that seems real suitable, and we may end up hiring somebody who's... Might only work for a few years.
Might only what?
Work for a few years, but who's got a lot of skills. And... Or we may... We'll post it again and see what kind of a response we get this time around. And posting it again is probably not until January 1st because I don't think it makes sense to post over the holidays.
So when did you fill the other position?
September. And we have a... His name is David Roberts. He's a former... Worked with the fire services in Burlington, Vermont for 20 years, and he really knows how to do inspections, and he knows a good bit about residential construction. So it's working pretty well.
That helps you.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it couldn't do it without that. And Chuck Miller's retired, but he's been back a little bit here, a little bit there, especially for plan reviews.
So how do you handle, in your department, complaints?
They have to be in writing, and we investigate them. And if... We generally try to negotiate some kind of a resolution, just with discussions, but we were just talking about a situation where two years... A little less than two years ago, we ended up in court, and we may end up going back to court again. So sometimes it goes unregistered cars.
Oh, that's getting ridiculous.
Now, Consular O'Donnell had a couple of questions.
Sure, thank you. How are your department's responsibilities going for Williamsburg? You're still providing services?
We are providing services, and, you know, we do... Every year, I do a cost benefit, and we charge them around, you know, $37,500. We pay, and we've, you know, we've developed a sort of a cost per inspection and a cost per permit processing and a cost per zoning complaint response, and we're doing well with it. I don't... I don't see any reason to let it go. It's part of what keeps us able to have the funding for three full-time inspectors. We also do... We do Williamsburg electrical permits also. We do... And we do weights and measures for Amherst, Hadley, and Grandby, Long, North Hampton.
What about West Hampton?
No, not West Hampton, and we used to do Southampton, but they opted out of the program.
I thought I saw in the Gazette with Chuck Miller's name in it.
He was not... He was... He was the building inspector for West Hampton, but not to the city. That was his job, separate from the city.
I get that.
Well, we have a municipal contract with Williamsburg to provide building inspection services. Chuck Miller worked for the town of Williamsburg... I mean, the town of West Hampton.
Oh, okay.
As like his second job.
A little confusing.
Okay, so it does sound like you're going to be very busy in the next coming year. Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the past 12 months, cost of construction, the part that got stuck in the other software was about $490,000 worth of cost of construction. So it would put us over $70 million estimated cost for a year. And we've... There's a company that's tracking permit activity for 13 municipalities, and they break them into tiers. And, you know, the city of Boston is... And then Mass, the state D-CAM Division of Capitals and Assets Management. Worcester and Springfield are in the top tier, and then as the populations go down, you drop to a lower tier. We may well move from the third tier to the second tier just based on our construction activity. It's... We're... Northampton's more than, you know, than 28,500 population in terms of activity. It's more of a destination. And so there's a lot of people that don't necessarily live in Northampton who are in town during the day, and that's part of why there's as much activity as there is.
If I may, just... What goes along with the change in tiers in terms of...
It's number... I'll send the... No, nothing. Absolutely nothing. It's... In some ways, it's just a ranking system. And it's a little bit the way they asked... They reached out... It's done by a private company. They reached out about four years, five... Three or four years ago to a bunch of communities to see who would participate, and they had some sense of demographics. And then as people participated, and I can send the reports around, they come out every six months, and they're usually about three months behind. That'll be great, thanks. Sorry.
No problem. It happens.
I had it, I wrote this before, but in my head it was five.
Well, we were just hearing the report from Commissioner Hasbrook, and what he showed us here is kind of a breakdown of anticipated escalated work for this department, given the...
This is the past 12 months of permitting activity for the city.
So then, right now, there is not a balance?
No, there's never a balance. There's never a balance. The balance due got paid, but it was right at the transition between this software and the new software, and then we came back out of the new software. So that $39,000 shows as a receipt in the new software.
Well, I'm glad I brought that up because there's a...
And those permits are paid when the permits are pulled, not at the inspection.
We don't even enter a permit in the system until we have the fees. That's the way that we've done it. We have to refund occasionally a fee where a project, you know, doesn't work out, but no, we don't... It won't even show up in the system unless the money's been paid.
Just, I had one more question about that. So you were talking about the increase in the urban residential zones, and you... The example being the Adon, Hinckley. Do we know what percentage over... I mean, is it... Do you have a ballpark of how many across the city, or is it a couple hundred? Is it that many, or...
No, I think that... No, I don't. We're going to...
Dozens?
Probably going to be 50 new one- and two-family residential dwelling units over the... In a 12-month period.
In the whole city, not in the...
In the whole city.
Okay.
And so there probably is going to end up being... I don't know. I don't know. That's...
That's a hard one.
Well, it's difficult because the soft... The software we're using now, the old software, doesn't break it out very well at all. All that information is in a text field attached to a permit. You pretty much have to plow through, you know, like 500 permits to pick it out. The new software will do a lot better, but it doesn't work in other... There's other ways it does.
Right, but to break it down into zone, that's actually something the planning department would probably have better access to and to know, don't they?
No, it's unfortunate, but we're stuck with it. We're just... We literally are stuck with going through however many permits we need to go through. Hundreds of permits to break it out that way. And you could do ballpark estimates, but that's, I think, the only way we're going to do it because the... This permitting software doesn't attach the zoning district to a permit. It isn't... And connection isn't there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Again, my apologies for... I'll... And you've probably already mentioned this, but that 50 estimated new residential units, where does that fit in the trend line of the last few years?
We've got... We have to go back into the early 2000s to see anything approaching those kind of numbers.
It struck me as pretty big.
Right, it is.
More in the 20s and 30s? Or even...
You know, teens, 20s, and we tipped over 30, I think, for the first time in 2000. Unless we give fiscal year or calendar year, depending on who's asking, because... But the numbers are pretty consistent, but I don't think we tipped over 30 until last fiscal year. Until... Unless you go back to like 2004.
And that reflects some Village Hill activity, too, I assume.
It's Village Hill, it's Emerson Way, it's... And then the rest of it is infill development. And I really could be wrong on the amount of infill development. I just could be... I could have missed it because, like you say, it's hard to pull it out. A single-family house, a new single-family house is a new single-family house. And we... Unless you actually look at that permit, it's hard to know where it goes.
Well, given that we... There was so much work that went into changing that zoning and... Surprised... So there isn't a way... And that's how the planning department would get it, by seeing what building permits are called, unless it was something that had to come before the planning board?
No, I mean, what they did is they changed it from the potential for special permitting to allowed by right.
Yes.
On properties that wouldn't have been buildable, you know, in 2000 and early 2015.
Right.
So it doesn't come in front of the paperwork.
Right.
And that was the big motivation for new software. You know, I mean, that we want... We need software that can better track our activity. We have a lot of activity, and this is awfully crude. This old sub... The old program's awfully crude. The old program hasn't changed much since 1998. I mean, it's really ancient for software, but...
So this is new software that doesn't...
This is the old stuff.
Oh, okay. And but the new software also does not cross-check with the...
But didn't work out for other... Didn't work out for other reasons.
Okay, one being that it can't designate the... Which zone?
No, it was almost impossible to input a permit, and it was equally difficult to get a report out of it. The way it tracked did very well, except that it wasn't ready for prime time, I think.
Consular?
Yes. How are we doing as far as accessory apartments? Because I know when I designed that ordinance, and when Tony was the building inspector, he said so many people had applied, and I do know that on my ward, I have had people who have connected with accessories on their homes with their in-laws or whatever. So how are we doing with them?
Well, it's... Two things happened. One thing is that what... Well, let me predicate it by saying that an accessory apartment is no different from a two-family house in terms of the building code. It's only the way it's optimized. And accessory apartments used to be required because two families weren't allowed in certain districts, and a small lot would only support a single dwelling unit. Well, now that's... Two dwelling units are allowed on a lot that only used to support one, it could be a two-family rather than an accessory apartment in a URC or URB district. The URA districts, the lots sizes, the allowance got smaller for the res... For the urban... I mean, for the rural districts, it's still... It still does require an accessory apartment. So what we are seeing, there's been a steady number of accessory apartments added to single-family homes.
Oh, yeah, families are very happy about it.
And they... There's an allowance for a single-family... For an accessory apartment in a detached structure needs a special permit from the zoning board. The fact that you can build two houses on a single lot means that some of what used to be done as an accessory apartment now go as just a second house on the lot, and it goes in front of the planning board as for site plan approval as opposed to a special permit from the zoning board. One thing that keeps people from converting garages to accessory apartments is that the... As a dwelling... is that the, as a dwelling unit, needs to meet the setbacks for any other house in that district. And a lot of garages didn't have those setbacks, are, are too close to the lot line. But the idea was they don't want people to be able to create a dwelling unit that's right next to the lot line.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for all your hard work, and I hope that you do find somebody very knowledgeable, and you'll be also having three...
We, we, absolutely, we will get somebody. Northampton is, in the same way that people want to move here, people do want to work here also, it's just some back and forth about the money.
So, you're just an electrician, that's what you need? Somebody, a bunch of them?
No, we need a, a building inspector who's, who's good at planning. That's what we need right now. That's the person that we most have, we have a place for.
Okay.
We're hoping to get a retired architect. That's the, that's the goal.
Is that a full-time job?
Mm-hmm.
What, thirty-five hours a week?
Forty hours.
Forty, and yours is what, fifty, sixty?
Uh, yeah. Well, mine, mine would be forty if it wasn't, if we had, if there were more people, if we weren't so busy. And that's the piece that, that, uh... The activity that Northampton has in terms of permit numbers is what allows us to have that many, uh, building inspectors.
Are you on call, seven days a week?
And we don't have, none, the other inspector doesn't live close enough to be on call, so... We're, we're working on some kind of a way to have somebody else on call.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
But, you know, Tony did it for years and years, until I started, Tony did it. So, however many years that was.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Correct, you know what?
A nice holiday.
Oh, I will, thank you.
Okay, so, I guess that just leads us to our, uh, appointments. And so, I'll ask if we can move on to the first on the list?
Yeah.
Counselor Marsh?
Um, Julia. I had a very good talk with Julia on the phone, very, very pleasant. She wants to thank us for considering her application to continue her service on the City of Northampton Parks and Recreation Commission. She was first appointed in two thousand fourteen, and she has found that her efforts with this group quite rewarding. She currently serves as the Parks and Recreation Commission representative on the Community Preservation Committee. She's a very strong advocate for recreational opportunities in our city, and she's a believer in the principles that underlie accessibility and availability of parks and open space to all our citizens. She is hoping that we can, that they can continue to strive toward achieving the benchmark measure of having a park that is within a ten-minute walk from every resident in our city and recreational facilities and programming that reaches all of our citizens' needs.
Would you like to offer a motion?
I would like to offer a motion.
Sure.
So, a motion to send with a positive recommendation to the full city council, made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that passes. And next, we had a reappointment to the Agricultural Commission of Tim Smith. I did speak with Tim. Tim is really, um, on this commission, as well as on the Energy and Sustainability Commission, to, in his capacity as lands manager at Smithbook. So, he's been there for a number of years, and, and, you know, I mean, that's a lot of land he manages between the agricultural and the forestry land, and maintenance of all of that and the farm, farm itself. So, um, uh, I told, I just thanked him for his being willing to serve. It helps the city just to have his experience and somebody who is doing that public lands management on a daily basis, you know, on the city's ag commission. And I would ask someone if they would make a motion to, um, send Tim to the city council. Okay, moved and seconded for a positive recommendation to the full council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that appointment passes, and then Counselor Bigwell?
Uh, yes, I had a chance last week to talk with Jonah Zuckerman, who, this will be a reappointment. And he, he has found it, this is sort of new to me, the fact that there's the municipal side of the, of the council for which he is the treasurer, and then there's the 501(c)(3) side, the nonprofit organization. And he says there's a consequence of that. Accounting matters are a little bit confusing. So, he, he wants to get reappointed in order to really dig in and try and improve the, the situation, which, which he describes as having their own kind of, kind of account despite Brian's, you know, very, very good efforts. And he's also wants to be part of the ongoing transition of First Night Responsibilities, of course, which is a very, very big issue for, for the Arts Council. And this year, Penny is, is still involved as a, as a consultant through this transition. So, one of the main tasks of the whole Arts Council is to absorb all this incredible years of institutional memory regarding First Nights. So, everybody is excited about First Night under the, under the purview of the, of the Arts Council, and a little nervous about it, too. But anyway, he's, he's very, very much committed to working on all these, all these issues and wants, and is glad he's up for reappointment. So, I would recommend his reappointment.
Sure.
Okay, moved and seconded to send with a positive recommendation to the full council, Jonah Zuckerman, reappointment to the Arts Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And that carries as well. Okay, and the last, to see, I did attach on the business whether we, um, the list of who we had for departmental presentations up until, I mean, the ones that came after the Veterans Council were actually, I think we only heard at that point from police and fire. Well, that brought us right into the city clerk interim position that we spent, we had a couple of meetings that we caught up, and we didn't do any presentations, but threw, at least a few meetings. So, we're pretty much, I mean, we can add that we did police on this list. But I would imagine at this point, this might even be a discussion that might be better had with the new formulation after the committee, I mean, the council reorganization in January. Who else spoke, have other thoughts about that?
It sounds, it actually does make sense, yeah.
Okay, and I don't know, I mean, I would hope that we're not gonna... I don't know what happens if we get appointments referred to us in the next council meeting or two, because I don't know if that'll require... Well, you know, even if, even if we were to get them in the next meeting, it would still push it off into...
January.
January, so I don't know if that's just matters that we have to continue on to the next council, or how that, how that works out.
I mean, the committee will still exist, even if the membership isn't technically determined. So, they can still be referred. I guess it'd be a question in January whether, you know, what point people are reappointed to the committee so that they can do, that the committee can do its business regardless of appointments.
Right. Well, we'll see, I mean, you don't know any appointment...
There's no appointments on this list.
Okay, okay, so I would bet you there won't be other ones for, for the seventeenth, or the twentieth, probably not. So?
All right. So, this, so this, the last meeting, if this, this formulation...
This, of this cycle of the city council? Yeah.
Well, I'll thank the chair and all members of the committee for a job well done. I didn't realize how many people we spoke to, and a lot of...
Well, I don't know how many, I mean, we must have done a hundred, more than that. Hundred and fifty appointments.
Eight appointments.
I mean, we did a lot of appointments, because they were meetings. We had seventeen and twelve. Yeah, so, that's over two years, so.
I don't know, but that's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. I'll ask if there is a final motion?
Want to do a adjourn?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?